Time to start our public hearing for November the 7th, 2016. Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Number one on public hearing. In order to amend the fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget and to transfer $45,000 from the general fund one hundred balance to a new project, Phoenix Square Pedestrian Bridge Repair FEMA reimbursement project has call shares of seventy-five percent federal, twenty-five percent local.
We covered this briefly at the last meeting. This is a little different. What you have before you is the full budget that was designed by our city engineer in conjunction with FEMA representatives who came out after the storm in March. This pedestrian bridge was actually damaged at the storm in March. They have agreed to reimburse us and they have actually already done so, but because this was a March storm, those reimbursement funds went to the last fiscal year and they went back to the general fund balance. They did not stay in this fiscal year. So what we're asking you to do is move them into this fiscal year, set up a project account so that we can go forward with the work on this project.
Any questions?
Nope. Three kinds of...
No questions.
Please, the council. Number two, in order to declare a move appropriate as a surplus and not needed for a public purpose in providing of donation to benefit the public safety.
Janet Thurman introduced this at the last meeting. She is on her honeymoon tonight, so this is surpassing a 2008 Crown Victoria and we plan to donate it then to the Roseland Police Department.
You said to the Roseland?
Yes, sir.
Do you hear echo?
It's this way. It's very hot.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Vice President.
Public. Now we're moving to our regular session. Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
O'Heavenly Father, once again, we are gathered here to do the business of the City of Hammond. We pray, O'Heavenly Father, that we are fair, that we do what is best for this city, that we may grow, O'Heavenly Father, and be all that we can be. We pray, O'Heavenly Father, that this election that we're about to have give us good results so that the United States may continue to be one of the best countries in this world. These are our blessings, we ask, in the name of your precious Son Jesus, to God be the glory. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without liberty and justice for all.
Counselor report.
I have Ms. Deborah Hampton that has some concerns. Would you please come up and give your name and address for the record?
Deborah Hampton, and I live at sixteen eleven Palmetto Road in Hammond. And my problem is the children that are running wild in the neighborhood, that seem to be unsupervised. Or when I leave my home, my yard is fenced in on the side and in the front, and there's a trailer park in the back. And the children, I know it's at least a quarter of a mile from my home. The children are coming in my yard. I have a handicapped child that is twenty-two years old, and she has some fruit trees in the back. And we went to a funeral on Saturday, and when we came back, they had gone in the yard and they picked all of her lemons off of her lemon tree and dropped them on the ground, and the lemons were still green. When we drove in the backyard on the patio, I saw her with tears in her eyes, and I said, "What's wrong? Are you hurting?" She said, "No, limb." Because she's non-verbal, so she can say very few words. And I happened to look out the window and saw her lemons were right away. I got upset because she was a shaken baby at two months, and I've had her for twenty-two years, and it really broke my heart to see her hurting. So I called the police and asked him to go back to the trailer park and talk to the parents in the trailer park. Well, he didn't do that. He went down the street and talked to one of their young men, and then he went on out and he never came back. Well, that upset me. So I'm here to ask you all to please talk to the landlord or somebody that runs that trailer park back there and tell them that they need to talk to the parents back there and get control of those children. Because these are three, four, five, and six-year-old children. If they're that terrible now, what are they going to be like four or five years from now? Because, I mean, I am a mother. I raised two wrong kids on that corner, and not one of my children hung out on that corner. And not one of the children that grew up with my children hung out on that corner. They are all productive, young people now with full-time jobs, so I don't expect those children to be bothering me at the age of sixty-five. I am a taxpayer and citizen. I have been on that corner since eighty-five, and I don't feel like, at my age, I should have to be going through that. So I'm asking for police to be patrolling the area more often. I don't see any city police coming through there, so I am here voicing my voice. Thank you for your time.
Chief.
I'd like to respond to that.
Yes.
James Stewart for the City of Hammond Police Department. Ma'am, can you just give me the address again, please?
Sixteen eleven Palmetto is on the corner of Natchitoches and Hammond. I'm major two blocks from the new building of the city police area down there across from Allison Supermarket.
All right. For the record, to address your concerns, I will have increased patrols in that neighborhood. And is the trailer park in the parish or is it in the city?
It's in the city. It's about two blocks from my house.
I'll take care of it with the... I'll work with the patrol division and then I'll take a ride over there and talk to the... Is it the manager of the... Is it a manager of the trailer park?
He doesn't even live in the city.
Yeah, she said no. Okay. Are you going to be at your home, ma'am? You retired?
Yes, I'm retired. I'm home all the time.
Okay. I'll take care of it. Follow up with her as well.
You're welcome. Stop by and talk to me.
Mr. Vice President, on the nineteenth of November, Councilwoman Beard and I, we're going to... We're making a trip down to the LHAA Swim, State Swim Meet for boys and girls to kind of get a feel for what that event's all about. So we were going to obviously rent a vehicle, a van, and take some... anybody from Hammond who might be interested in going if we can work it out. We have limited seating, but we do want to try to do that so we can get that information and kind of do some surveillance while we're there on that event and look at what that does, how that impacts itself on that particular weekend. So that's the weekend of the nineteenth of November. So we're going to do that, and we'd like to invite anybody, any city council member or the administration who might want to go to attend with us if they would so like to do that. That's my report.
Ma'am.
I was out at the airport today. The shut down looks like they're on schedule. Actually, I think the rain might have helped it because they were watering the sand to get the compaction in place. So we're looking good up at the airport. They're bringing in the air stumps, so I'm excited about that. They should be open November nineteenth. They're feeling very confident that they will have it open. We're going to have Friday, the eleventh, Blue Star Memorial in front of Zemari Park, honoring veterans. There'll be a placement of a plaque there. Anyone that would like to attend, please do so and support. We had a luncheon. Janice Beard... She was actually the emcee of the luncheon. And that was a good event. We were honoring women veterans. So the administration stepped out and I want to thank everyone that helped serve and pick up. It was a good, good event. Also, we had the Back the Blue BBQ this past weekend, which was a big success as well for the union reps and all of their members to raise money. Also, we'll have a star November nights, Friday the eighteenth, DDD function, that'll be six to ten. And once again, the swimming pool, the aquatic center. Obviously, we're moving along. We're going to try to make some quick moves. We know we should get some funding from the land and water grant. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll know that. And then with this visit that you'll have and with the interest of the public, we want to find out if this is something we should do or if we should put this thing back in place as a swimming pool. Obviously, if we did come up with the funds that it would take to make it an aquatic center, it could be good for the city, economic development, and just overall bringing people into our city. But obviously, money is the key here. And other than that, that is, please get out and vote tomorrow. That's why we're not having a council meeting tomorrow, so please get out and place your vote.
Are there any business, new business need to be recognized tonight? Now, we approve a minutes.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolution nine, old business nine. New business. Number one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a memorandum of understanding between the Louisiana Department of Public Service, Public Safety, and Corrections, Office of Motor Vehicles, and the City of Hammond for the public license tag agent.
This is the annual renewal of the contract between the city and the state. The state did, if you remember, came to us and recommended Barbie Farkas come and her office, take over that office. It was either transfer it to a private entity or lose the office altogether. And so with that said, we moved forward with our annual contract with her, and this is our annual contract with the state that just continues that relationship.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, motion to approve. Motion, is there a second?
I have a question about that, Mr. Vice President, if you don't mind. Quick question. So, Lacy, just for a record, I know at one point, if I can remember correctly, we read it, eighteen bucks for a fee, and then we added on three dollars, which was a state requirement, and we approved that. And that money was to go for building renovations.
It went for building renovations and to pay the rent and to pay the utilities for the building.
So now that we have... So do we still collect those three dollars?
Yes. I think it's eighteen dollars total, if I remember, and it's three dollars of the eighteen.
Well, maybe it was. So after we... Now that we've contracted this out to a private business, do we... And do they own the building or do they lease the building or what happens there?
No, the lease is between the city and the property owner, which is Daryl Smith.
And then we pay... So we pay the...
Correct.
So the three dollars that we increased the rate, does that go to the city or...
Correct. The three dollars comes back to the city for maintenance of the interior portion of the building. Let's say the air conditioner breaks or something like that, then we may assist with that. The landlord is responsible for the roof and the main building structure itself, and it pays for the rent and it pays for the utilities to keep the lights on.
And so then the third, I guess, the sublease then, the business that's running the... So they pay... So there's no rent for them at all?
There is no rent, no. They pay for all of their staff, they pay for all the equipment, they pay for all the licensing that's required on their part and all the background checks that are required on their part. So they pay for everything else. The city does not pay for any of those items.
So why are they charging so much more than the state run?
I cannot tell you that. I don't know what they use their remainder funds on, other than paying for their staff, paying for the inside, paying for office supplies, paying for the certifications that are required. That... I don't have a daily breakdown of how they spend their budget, though.
Do you think we should have that information before we renew the contract? I'm just asking a question. Should we...
This is state recommendation, person or the entity that run the facility. All private entities, from what I understand, across the state, charge more than the fee than the state locations do, and that's part of the assessment of the fee. And we're just basically a pass-through.
So we have to pay the building cost because that's... I guess that's not a factor.
Other than approved.
I mean, so that's not a fragment of their revenue? Because I guess right now, they're charging... So the three dollars per... The rent, we still collect money from the fee that the vendor collects to pay the rent?
The overall total fee that they are able to charge is set by state law, and so they can charge up to that amount. And as part of that, three dollars comes back to the city to pay for the utilities and for the rent on the building.
One way to look at this is it's really a convenience. I think the way it was structured and initially put in is it doesn't preclude folks from driving to AMIT and doing the same thing. It really was an attempt, I think, to keep a local office here for convenience.
I understand.
Correct. What the state did is basically threaten to close all the offices that were not in the parish seat. So AMIT was going to be our only option. We decided to do this to provide another option for people to have somewhere closer to go.
I think the three dollars was in addition just for maintenance. The three dollars were never designed to cover rental fees. So I'm just... I think I'm correct on that because I think the three dollars came after the fact when we were already paying. We charged an additional three bucks to pay...
There has always been a fee that was collected to provide for that portion of the building.
I agree.
Even when Office of Motor Vehicles was there, the city was still responsible for paying the rent and paying the utilities.
But we were paying just out of the three dollars or...
Yes.
What is the rent per month? Do you know?
I don't know offhand.
Mr. Mayor, do you know?
No.
Because I think that three dollars was generating like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So that three dollars generated.
It stays in the DMV fund. It is not something that goes out from the budget and whatnot, so it stays in that fund and it's only for that purpose.
So that's what I was saying, that the three dollars was in addition after we'd already started this process.
No.
Yes, it was. Because the three dollars was additional money that was going to be left in the account.
I believe they were able to charge up to eighteen dollars according to the state schedule, but as part of that, our three-dollar fee still remained the same.
Just want to know what the rent is. If we could... If we're paying that bill, do we know? Do we know what we're paying?
Sure.
Of course.
Do you know what it is?
No, we'll get it back to you. We just said we didn't know offhand.
If we can get that information, I'd be more happy to support it, I mean, to follow along. I just want to know what the rent is and to make sure that that is what we think it is. Because I think that that three bucks are the additional charge we added on. Because that... Mr. Vice President, I think that was approved after we were already paying, and those funds were left in the budget for maintenance only. I remember the former mayor, when that was presented to the council, and that was above and beyond the rent that we were paying. So I'm just curious, you know, how we're... What the rent really is for that building. We should probably want to know that. We can... I would think we want to know that number. Do we have to do it tonight? Can we do it at the next meeting?
You're the council.
Is it going to be... Is it going to delay anything or cause a problem?
The state is waiting on the contract for renewal.
Motion on table.
Just need a second. So, Chairman, if there's no second, then you can declare the motion dies for lack of a second, and the council will take no action. Anybody want to have a second to the motion?
No.
Okay, there's no second. So the motion then dies for lack of a second.
All right. Mr. President. I'd like to move that we table the motion. Now, we can also table, can't we? Just for further clarification, I'd like to table the motion for further clarification on the rent so that we know exactly how those funds are really allocated. That's what I'd like to find out. So that's a motion to table until the next... For the next meeting.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice... Jason Hood.
No.
Mike Williams. Janice Carter Beard.
Uh, yes.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion table.
Number two. A resolution authorizing the Downtown Development District and its merchants to serve alcohol during the twelfth annual stare November night on Friday, November eighteenth, 2016, from six p.m. until ten p.m. The event will include the boundaries of West and East Roberts Street to West and East Coleman Street, from North and South Magnolia to North and South Cherry Street. Most activity will be located on West and East Thomas Street, South Cape, and North Cypress Street.
How you guys doing? My name's Austin Miller. I'm filling in for Chelsea Taylor today at the Downtown Development District. As far as starting November night goes, nothing new. These are our normal requests, same boundaries and events as usual.
Second.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three. A resolution grant a waiver of City of Hammond Open Container Law to the Downtown Development District Board of Directors and Merchants during the twelfth annual stare November night on Friday, November eighteenth, 2016, from six p.m. until ten p.m. The event would include boundaries of West and East Roberts Street, West and East Coleman Street, from North and South Magnolia Street until North and South Cherry Street. Most activity will be located on West and East Thomas, South Cape Street, and North Cypress Street.
Second.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number four. A resolution to approve Rouse's Market, number sixty-one, located at twenty-seven oh four West Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, to attain a permit to sell packaged high and low alcohol. Owner is Rouse's Enterprise LLC. Ms. Jenny.
Good afternoon. I see some smiles on those faces. Okay, well, tonight we're asking for you to approve a packaged alcohol for Rouse's coming into our neighborhood. They're going to take over the local LeBlancs, as we know it now, and they are asking to be approved to sell packaged alcohol out of the grocery store. And everything does seem to be in order, and we're asking for approval tonight. We should have someone here to ask any questions that y'all might have, and I'll hand it over to him.
Hi. Keith Molet from Rouse's. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Welcome to the community. We're happy to have you.
We appreciate it.
Looking forward to working with you guys.
We can't wait to start.
Second.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number three to the owner-engineer agreement between the City of Hammond and Franklin Engineer LLC for drainage improvement Bay Street Project at the Hammond North Shore Region Airport. Engineer fee including a hundred percent grant from... Lady...
L A D O T?
Yeah. Total project grant amount of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, including construction of engineer Chuck Spang.
Thank you. In March of 2012, we signed an agreement with the City of Hammond, with the council's authority, based on being ranked the highest on RFP for drainage work, five phases of drainage at the Hammond Airport. The contract was amended and includes DOTD specifications, and in the five phases, there's supposed to be an amendment made for every phase of the work since when it was initially signed in March of 2012. Only phase one was identified. We now have phase three identified of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. There is an engineering fee associated with it that's stipulated by a state fee curve. We have submitted a proposal to the administration to do the work less than the state fee curve, in order to... At about a ten or fifteen percent discount less. And this is the amendment that makes this enforce and will allow us to proceed with work. Primarily, the work is on the west side of the airport. There are still some catch basins within the airport infield, but it's primarily gray insurance terminal area, and that... Most of the runway work, drainage work is done, so now we're starting to kind of spread out and do more work. And it will tie into the drainage work that's underway or about to get let on Leon Ford Drive. So this is the action for the council to approve. It is hyperlinked if you want to look at any more details. It's amendment number three.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a local service agreement with ten-four past governors related to adjudicated property.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the council. This is our continuing effort to deal with adjudicated properties in the cities, and it's been a bit of a struggle because of title issues that arise out of tax sale purchases. These are properties where taxes are unpaid, and they get adjudicated to the city, to the parish. And the problem becomes, what would you do with it when you have it? One such problem would be the city acquires it, but there's parish taxes owed, or the parish acquires it and there's city taxes owed. So this is an effort to give those... These agencies, the city and the parish, the ability to deal with each other to the extent allowed by law to waive taxes or interest or penalties to get the property back into commerce, because oftentimes you have to donate the property to somebody who wants to put it back into use. This agreement was actually first proposed in nineteen ninety-eight between the parish and the city. The city, back when Mayor Taylor was mayor, did think it was a good idea and entered into it, but the parish couldn't find record where they had entertained that. So we've been in discussions with the parish on one particular property on Short Street, trying to get that cleared up, and they've asked that this be formally approved by the council. So we recommend it. It's one small effort, but it's still an effort toward getting these adjudicated properties back into commerce, and I'd recommend approval.
Actually, one question. This one, I wanted to find out a question about this one in particular. So this agreement is authorizing both governmental agencies to waive any existing taxes?
To the extent allowed by law.
To the extent allowed by law.
Yes, sir.
So, and I was just asked because I didn't... I was trying to follow up on this and kind of really understand exactly what we were doing. Why would that... Why would that not be in that language? Why would that not be what we're striving to do? Why wouldn't that be stated into the, um, the resolution? That we're really trying to actually mitigate, you know, taxes? Does it say that?
It's in the language to get the adjudicated properties back into commerce and revitalize the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So, this is after either the city or the parish?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, adjudicates the property and takes title.
I meant to call you by the order, just to make sure I got our understanding, 'cause I don't wanna waste time that I just get a chance to, so...
I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions you might have.
I'm fine. I just, I just wanna make sure I understood. So, it is, it is really designed to, to, to get the taxes waived, so that which allows the city or the parish... I'm assuming if it's in the city, it's gonna be city property. We're not giving any property to the parish.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. It really deals with, with how do you handle where taxes are owed on property? Say if we tried to sell it, we would be sure the parish's taxes got paid. If the parish tries to sell property that they took back...
Gotcha.
By their process.
I gotcha.
They're gonna be sure the city taxes get paid.
I gotcha.
Yes, sir. So, it's really the, it formalizes the relationship between the city and the parish.
Well, who gets to take back property first, if they both, if both owes taxes?
Whoever, whoever brings it back up.
Whoever brings it up first, huh? Who brings the matter up first?
A- and it's adjudicated back, sometimes as a tax sale purchaser, who may purchase the property at tax sale and not, it doesn't go back to the city, to the parish. That does happen, and that does complicate things.
And the problem is, there's truly no clean title. So, once someone puts something on that property and errors come back, there could possibly be issues to deal with.
Yeah, the reality is, yes, sir.
We're seeing people like Brett not follow through. Everybody's to the point of ready to adjudicate, like we are. But yet, we haven't seen a clear success. New Orleans is coming under supply right now.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven. A resolution one, accepting a seventeen thousand dollar local governor assistance program granted to purchase an emergency generator for the one ninety maintenance facility, and agreed to cash match up to three thousand dollars in three, authorizing the mayor, or his designated to sign grant document.
Good evening. This is one that we came and present to you guys way back, I think it was sometime last year, actually. We finally have the contract for it. We're asking you to allow the mayor to sign that contract. Um, you've previously approved or supported the application and the match. Um, right now, if we need to match the grant, it is possible that we could buy the generator for seventeen thousand or less. But if we do need to match, uh, we think that the match amount will be less than the three thousand, and currently, we're planning on taking that from the grant match fund, as I explained last time. We have more enough money in there to cover that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight. A resolution one, accepting a forty-six thousand eight hundred Louisiana Highway Safety Commission grant to continue overtime DWI, juveniles under age, drinking, seat belts, and distracted driver enforcement. And two, authorizing the mayor, or his designated to sign grant document.
These grants are, uh, it's a continuation of the efforts we've had in the past over time for the police department to, to do basically the, the checkpoints. Um, they're also now doing distracted driving enforcement. That was something that we helped the state to pilot last year, and it's been a fairly successful endeavor. So, we've been awarded a forty-six thousand eight hundred dollar grant this year. There is no match. We're simply asking the council to allow us to sign the documents.
Motion to approve.
Second. Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine. A resolution accepting a five thousand dollar Energy Charitable Foundation grant to install new computers in the Michael Kennedy Center Computer Lab. And two, authorizing the mayor, his designated to sign grant document.
Uh, this is a five thousand dollar grant from the Energy Charitable Foundation. Again, there is no match. Uh, the fund should allow us to purchase another seven all-in-one computers with Microsoft Office on there. Um, this'll allow us to teach kids how to use the computer and basic office apps during the after-school program, as well as the, uh, the summer program. Um, we also partnered with First Guaranty Bank, and they've been doing some financial counseling on those same computers. This'll increase the number of computers in the lab from twelve to seventeen, and we're trying to find some additional funds to double the number in the lab. So, we're still working on that.
Good job. So moved. Second.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number ten. A resolution one, to accept a twelve thousand six hundred bulletproof vest partnership grant to purchase new and replacement vests for the police officer. Two, agreed to cash match up to twelve thousand six hundred in three, authorizing the mayor, his designated to sign grant document.
This is another grant that we had previously come to you guys and got permission to, um, submit. Uh, we have now received the amount we requested, uh, which is twelve thousand six hundred dollars. We are required to match that amount. It's a dollar-for-dollar matching grant. Um, the combined amount will give us the ability to purchase a minimum of twenty-eight vests. We, we just learned, actually, last week, that the vest cost has gone down, so we'll probably be able to purchase more than twenty-eight, which'll keep all of our officers in bulletproof vests. Uh, we're actually buying reserve officers' vests, and we're accounting for new officers that we might hire. So, um, and I'll be presenting, uh, introducing an ordinance to move these funds later on from the cash-awarded, uh, court-awarded cash asset, uh, fund.
Good job. You've been busy, huh?
We have. It's been a busy year.
Good job.
So moved.
Thanks.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eleven. A resolution to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the general fund one hundred balance to recreation program fix assist of one zero zero five zero five zero zero dash five seven zero 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 to purchase computer and equipment for the computer lab.
As Charles said, the goal is to double the size of the computer lab. So, this is to purchase additional computers in addition to the grant that's coming in. It will also provide for a teacher's symposium that can be at the front of the room. Um, we are proposing to move, if you've been to the Kenny Center recently, instead of the small room where they're located, to move them into the multipurpose classroom, but to put them in the back of the room so that the front half of the room can continue its general purpose use with tables and chairs and science experiments and everything else that goes on in there. Um, but this will leave at least half that room. The back half will be for the computer lab. They'll face up to the front where a screen is located. There's already a projector in that room. So, we're making use of the assets that we already have and truly creating a multipurpose room.
And this will complete the computer lab.
Right. The other thing, too, that I would mention, Charles mentioned both the First Guaranty Partner that we had, the after-school and the summer program. One of the other ways that we've used that computer lab was teaching seniors computers classes, and, um, we partnered with a lot of our home repair grant recipients and some of the other folks, and they came in and learned how to do all kinds of things on the computer.
That's great. That's a good job.
So moved.
Second.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of order. Final adoption of order to amend the fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget and transfer forty-five thousand dollars from the general fund one hundred balance to a new project, Venus Square Pedestrian Bridge Repair. It's Venus, it's, it's a, is a reemb, FEMA reimbursement project that's caused the share of seventy-five percent federal and twenty-five percent local.
Second.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two. Final adoption of an order declaring the move for proper add surplus and not needed for public purpose and provide for a donation of benefit for public safety.
So moved.
Second.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of order is set for public hearing. The introduction of an order to transfer a twelve thousand six hundred dollars from Fund Two Oh Five Court Award, says to project account two five one two zero 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 dash five four zero one six seven dash two one seven oh three, to purchase bulletproof vests.
Thank you. This is related to the motion or the resolution we just approved. Um, it's twenty-one seven oh three is the project account for our current bulletproof vest partnership grant. The chief is here. If you have any questions, we've already talked. He's just here for my backup, but, um, if there are any questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for November twenty-second, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Janice Carter Beard moving ahead.
Lamar Marshall, second.
I just dropped.